All right, it is 6 o'clock on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022, and I am calling to order the Placerville Planning Commission meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So now we're moving on to item number two, roll call. Mr. Rebus, could you please call roll?
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Let's see, Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Chair Gopper?
Here.
Commissioner Keeney?
Here.
Commissioner Lepa?
Here.
And Commissioner List is out today.
So, moving on, closed session report, we have none. And adoption of the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So we will move on to our consent calendar. Would any commissioner like to remove an item for discussion?
Move to adopt.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I see none. So, moving on to items pulled from the consent calendar, we had none. Items of interest to the public, non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any member not on the agenda and is within the subject matter of the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. You will have three minutes to address the commission. Do any members of the public like to make comments on non-agenda items? I see none. So, moving on to written communications on non-agenda items. Mr. Rebus, do we have any written communications?
We have one written communication, but it pertains to one of the items that's on the agenda.
Okay.
And each of you were provided a copy of those. We also provided to you via email.
Great, thank you. We have no presentations in educational workshop sessions tonight, so we will move on to public hearings. I will now open the public hearing for item 10.1, Site Plan Review, SPR 22-02. Ms. Hunter, could you please provide the staff report?
Yes. So SPR 22-02 is a request from the applicant to install a permanent 40-foot by 80-foot by nine-and-a-half-foot sealand shipping container for facility use. The project site includes a structure of approximately 20,000 square feet on a 2.7-acre parcel. The site is zoned commercial in both the Placerville General Plan and zoning ordinance and is bounded by commercial development to the west, east, and south sides, and to the north by residential development Hidden Springs Mobile Home Park. The property was originally used as a bowling alley, first Hangtown Lanes and then Sierra Hills Lanes until it was purchased by Motherlode Rehabilitation Enterprises, LLC, Moore, in the late 1980s. As proposed, the project includes the installation of a permanent 320-square-foot sealand container along the western side of the existing building, just beyond the fire lane and just south of the drain inlet. As part of the installation, approximately 10 cubic yards of soil would be removed and replaced with aggregate base. Once installed, the container would be used as additional storage for Moore. Since sealand containers are more typical in heavy commercial and industrial areas, staff is recommending Condition of Approval Number Two, requiring landscaping to screen its visibility from Placerville Drive. Staff is also recommending the addition of Condition of Approval Number Five in regards to storm drain pipes that were brought to attention by the Engineering Department. So therefore, staff recommends that Planning Commission take the following action. First, adopt the staff report as part of the public record. Second, make the following findings of fact in support of SPR 22-02 request. One, that the request is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per Sequoia Guidelines Section 15311, which exempts projects involving construction or placement of minor structures accessory to existing commercial, industrial, or institutional facilities. Two, the request as conditioned is consistent and in harmony with the general plan in that it will continue to create conditions conducive to a convenient and desirable environment for customers and employees. And third, conditionally approve SPR 22-02, located at 399 Placerville Drive, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. The conditions are as follows. One, the approved project consists of installation of a permanent 320-square-foot sealand shipping container for facility use, as shown on the approved site plan. Approval is based on the analysis provided in staff's June 21st, 2022 report to the Planning Commission and limited to compliance with the project description, the applicant's mittel package, and all other conditions of approval set forth herein. And two, the applicant shall submit a site plan detailing the screening required to be consistent with the City of Placerville Development Guide, which would visually block the container from the right-of-way with landscaping subject to approval by Development Services. Three, the installation of the sealand container shall be subject to issuance of a building permit from the City of Placerville's Building Division. Four, as the project is within a floodplain, the container is required to comply with City Code Construction Regulations, Title 4, Chapter 9, Flood Damage Protection. And five, the applicant shall show the locations of the existing 20-inch and 30-inch storm drain pipes on the site plan and construction plan to be submitted with the building permit application. The placement of the storage container shall not be placed over the 30-inch storm drain pipe to allow for access and maintenance.
Thank you. Do any member of the commission have questions for staff?
I just have one question. Do we know anything about color of the container? Or is that...I didn't see any mention of it. I just wasn't sure if that was something we had considered or incorporated into it, or if it matters.
No, yes, it does matter because we wouldn't want it to be bright pink or fluorescent green or something of that nature. So we want to have it basically earth tone. So staff relied on the elevation, actually the picture of the actual sealand container that was contained in their application.
That was what I had seen, and just with, you know, the little markings on the side from what its prior use was as a shipping container. I was just wondering if we were going to have them painted like all one color or have it be a mellow color that kind of blended with the landscaping that we're having them do?
Yes, and it may be appropriate if the commission feels that it's not appropriate, if the color is not appropriately addressed, we can certainly add a sentence addressing that as a condition of approval.
Great, thank you. Even just might be along the lines of our palettes or something like that.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to congratulate Ms. Hunter for preparing a staff report that is eloquent as Mr. Painter used to produce. Now, having given you that compliment, allow me to pick. On page five, this is so minor, but hopefully you'll appreciate it. On page five, City of Placerville Development Guide in the paragraph, Section 3, Land Use and Zoning. Are you with me? Okay, and your microphone's not working.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yeah, much better. Okay. Geographically separate and somewhat isolated distinct. I believe that word is district. And if you go over to page six, and I'm only doing this so you know that I read your work. If you go over to page six, paragraph, it's under Staff Evaluation, paragraph 1, 2, 3, the Development Guide states that landscape guy...oh, wait, wait, wait. Not that one yet. Okay, so I think that's a typo. But then, continuing in the next sentence, important for this area is the development of, it should say "its potential" as a thriving. And I think that's supported if you go to page six, under Staff Evaluation, paragraph 1, 2, 3. It says the same language there, "to develop its potential." So those are just typographical and internal inconsistencies. Now, that was very much nitpicking. Now I'd like to try to add some value, and I'd like to tag on to Commissioner Lepa's question about color. And I'm wondering if staff, now, not that my fellow commissioners have heard this yet, so they may reject it outright, but if the applicant were to paint a mural on the container, would that be suitable to replace the screening? So they can certainly put up some screening, right? That's what we require. But if it was to be decorated, and perhaps they have staff or somebody there or a local artist that could paint something of interest, would staff say that that could take the place of the screening? Because now we have visual interest as opposed to something, quote-unquote, obnoxious? Assuming my fellow commissioners would even entertain it, I'd like to know if staff would accept it? Because if they won't, it's mute.
The applicant certainly has the opportunity to paint a mural on this structure because it's not subject, it's allowed by right. Staff is recommending some type of shrub, maybe like a, you know, fotinia or something that would grow thick enough, at least to shield that end of the sealand container from Placerville Drive, which, as you know, is a little bit elevated above.
And so, just painting it is not going to shield the fact that it's a sealand container. And this is probably maybe a little bit off point, but I want to give the commission just a little bit of history. It has been a number of years now,
but we do have an outstanding resolution and intent to amend the zoning code to address sealand containers in a more formal way, because they are considered a structure. And many times, we have members of the public, businesses and other uses, they consider a sealand container not a structure. And so we get sealand containers installed on properties without the requirement of a building permit. It is a structure, does require a building permit generally because it's greater than 120 square feet. And the issue with the commission, like I say some years ago now, was the visual impact that sealand containers have. Because if we see sealand containers, say, in our central business district or in our commercial zones, and even in like the highway commercial zone, they can have, they sort of invoke more of a heavy commercial or industrial look. Therefore, we wanted to have some kind of direction from the commission and eventually the council on how we should regulate them. So that's a little background on that.
I appreciate that. And then, I just recall that the, is it the loading end or the opposite sealed end that's going to front Placerville Drive? Now that I think about it. I had, for some reason, I had envisioned, it would have been the long profile, but I don't think that's it. It's the narrow, it's the narrow end, right, that faces Placerville Drive?
Well, this is probably something that could also be addressed by the applicant, but it's my understanding that the sealand container is a customized sealand container and is going to have two bay doors on the long section that faces the driveway. And so they will be able to access at two different points, not from the ends, but, you know, from the customized roll-up doors that will be on the side.
Okay. And where exactly was staff proposing that the shrub for tenia be placed? Because we see the chain link fence. Are you proposing it to be along the chain link fence portion? Because the other side, long axis, is the driveway. So that should not be of concern. And then the other end, which faces, I believe, south of Placerville Drive, if I remember this correctly, that's a loading end. So how, so I'm confused on that. So where exactly are you suggesting that the fotinia be placed?
Yeah, the sealand container is most visible on that, I guess, the east end or the end that faces Placerville Drive. So we were looking at some planting then that would be between the fence and the sealand container.
Oh.
Of course, we wouldn't have screening on the parking lot side because that's where the bay doors are to be located to allow, you know, access to the container. And the other side then isn't visible from anywhere. And then the backside backs up against an already landscaping area there to the fence, and it's below grade.
And so you don't think that along that chain link fence, which in and of itself is not terribly attractive, but it's functional, you don't think that there was a mural or something? And this is probably a moot point, but I'll still press it. If you don't think that there was a mural or something along that edge that that wouldn't be sufficient as opposed to a hedge kind of halfway up the chain link fence?
Well, I think what staff was looking at was we could have some kind of a shrub that would actually, it's the height of the shrub would exceed the height of the sealand container. Because if you look at the elevation of Placerville Drive, you're going to be looking down on it and not directly straight at it at ground level.
Okay. So the record should reflect that we are in fact requiring a shrubbery of the applicant.
Any further questions for staff? All right, I'll invite the applicant to come to the podium. You can make any additional comments that you would like to make on your project, and then I'll open it up for questions. Nope, it is now.
Hello, my name is Seth Nezbit with Warren Consulting Engineers, representative for Suzie Davies at Moore Facility. Thank you for taking the time to hear this application. We're really here to answer any questions you might have. I can speak to the mural and painting. I'm sure Suzie would be more than happy to paint the container whatever color that would desire to be painted. And I'm sure she has a lot of students and staff there that could probably paint a mural as well, too.
I just want to add, the painted container currently is a purple, is a lavender color that matches our outside of our building.
So, any questions you might have? We're free to answer any.
Any questions for the applicant?
So, yes, just going back on the colors. Just to confirm, then, that's your plan, is to maintain that color?
The same color as the building, yes.
So that, so a term of condition might either be to maintain something that's consistent with the existing building, or it will be in earth tone, right? So that way we cover it just, okay, thank you.
Of course.
I have one question for, I just want to clear up the record. There was, outside of the packet that we received for tonight's meeting, there was an exchange with you regarding the existing storm drain pipes. And I just wanted to make sure that the placement of this container isn't going to conflict with any existing infrastructure there on, at that side of the parking lot.
Yes, I can speak to that.
So just confirm that for us?
Yes, I can confirm that. The location we did pick for the container does not conflict with the existing storm drains. And it is, I believe, within four or five feet of the existing 30-inch storm drain that was discussed. And we would have no problem with the condition as written. And if there was a concern of any kind of surcharge on that pipe, there are very simple things we could do through the building permit process to address any surcharge that could possibly come from that container and load on that storm drain. There is also a 20-inch storm drain that the container currently sits over. That storm drain was, however, abandoned as part of the Moore Facility remodel that was completed 2016 or so, I believe. So that storm drain is no longer active and doesn't convey any water anymore.
Thank you for reviewing that for us.
Of course.
All right, I will bring it back to the commission for any further questions to staff and discussion.
They prepared to make a motion unless there's additional discussion?
I don't think so. I think the coloring and the palette was good and everything else was thoroughly explained, so I'd be open.
Then I would move that we approve Site Plan Review 22-02, adopting the staff report as public record with the corrections as previously mentioned in discussion with staff, accepting the recommendations and conditions specified on page seven with a additional condition under Roman numeral 3, 5, that the color of the sealand container shall be either concordant with that of the existing main building, comma, or shall be painted in earth tone. And the reason I phrase it that way is it's entirely possible that they could ultimately change the color of the existing building. So you still want the container to either follow that or to be a neutral earth tone. So that would be my motion.
I'll second.
All right, I have a first and a second. Could I get a roll call vote?
Before we do that, Madam Chair, just a question. Do we need, do we need a condition? I'll direct this to staff. Do we need any kind of a condition or reference regarding what Commissioner Keeney pointed out and this communication does regarding the infrastructure slash the storm pipes? Because I didn't add that. I just kind of presumed it was understood. But if it needs to be a condition, we can add that.
I believe Seth, the project engineer, addressed both pipes very, very well. Basically, it's not going to impact the 30-inch storm drain, which actually drains, you know, the larger area. And then, we didn't know, or at least, planning staff didn't know that the 20-inch was abandoned. So their submitted plans will show that. And anything could be addressed as the project engineer recommended during the building permit stage. So I think we're covered.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Can I just make a friendly amendment to that?
Sure.
That we formally state that there's a fifth condition? And we can maybe just reference the June 17th memo? Is that?
That would be a sixth condition, I think.
I'm sorry, what's number five?
I think I added number five.
Oh, I thought that was 3A. I misunderstood you.
Sorry, Roman numeral 3, new condition number five, sorry.
Okay, so the color specification is, as you see, at number five. And then, can we further amend it to condition six? And then we can just reference this language of the June 17th memo?
That's fine with me, I accept that.
Okay, both the first and second accept the amendment?
Yes.
All right, can I get a roll call vote? Unless staff has any further suggestions or clarification?
Pierre? We are good, I'm just taking down these notes. Thank you very much. Okay. Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Gopper?
Aye.
Commissioner Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepa?
Aye.
All right, motion passes for zero. There is a 10-day appeal period if anybody would like to file appeal. We will now move on to item 10.2. This is opening the public hearing for Site Plan Review, SPR 22-04. Ms. Hunter, could you provide the staff report?
Of course. So SPR 22-04 is a request from the applicant to make the following exterior modifications to the single-family dwelling located at 2902 Bedford Avenue, located within the Bedford Avenue Clay Street Historical Residential District. The changes are as follows. Remove the existing contemporary siding, vertical T111 and James Hardy vertical panel siding, and replace with new James Hardy vertical panel siding. Replace existing trim with new pre-primed vintage trim to match existing. Replace existing aluminum siding windows with new vinyl siding windows. And paint the siding, trim, gutters, and front door the colors provided in Figure 4 of the staff report. The project site is located at the corner of Bedford Avenue and Pleasant Street and includes a 576-square-foot, single-story, single-family home that was constructed in the mid-1930s. The bungalow-style house has been significantly modified over time to remove all original exterior features. Further, while within the historical district, the subject dwelling is not listed as a historical resource in the city's historic resource inventory, the State Register of Historic Places, or the National Register, yeah, of Historic Places. As a result, the proposed modifications are not subject to the Secretary of Interior Standards. However, the changes are subject to the guidelines contained in Placerville's Development Guide. In reviewing the applicant, application and site conditions, staff finds the proposed work will not diminish the historic integrity of the district and would complement and enhance the resident's site and surrounding areas. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission take the following action. First, to adopt the staff report as part of the public record. Second, to make the following findings of fact in support of SPR 22-04. One, that the request is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act per Sequoia Guidelines Section 15301, and that the project involves minor alterations to an existing residence that is not listed on city, state, or federal historic resource inventories, and that no expansion of the residential use is proposed. Two, the project site at Bedford, sorry, at 2902 Bedford Avenue contains a single-family dwelling with 576 square feet of floor area, but it's not, oh, that's duplicated. Not listed in the city's historic resource inventory, State Register of Historic Places, or the National Register of Historic Places. Three, the project request is consistent with Placerville's General Plan Community Design Element Goal C, in that the visual qualities of the proposed exterior alterations are compatible with the visual attributes of the neighboring structures within the historic district. Four, the project request is consistent with Criteria 8 Community Design of the Site Plan Review Ordinance 10-4-9, in that the project is found to be consistent with the goals and policies established in the community design element of the general plan. And five, the project request is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of zoning ordinance, Section 10-4-9, Site Plan Review, 10-4-10, Historical Buildings in the City, and the Development Guide, that are intended to protect the integrity of the residential historic district and individual structures located therein. And thirdly, conditionally approve SPR 22-04, located at 2902 Bedford Avenue, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. The conditions are as follows. Approve SPR 22-04 to replace the existing vertical T11 and James Hardy panel siding with the new James Hardy vertical panel siding. Replace existing trim with new pre-primed vintage trim. Replace existing aluminum sliding windows with new vinyl sliding windows. And paint the siding in Benjamin Moore Bermuda turquoise, the trim gutters and fascia pearly gates, and the front door blue macaw. Approval is based upon analysis provided in staff's June 21st, 2022 report to the Planning Commission and limited to the compliance with the project description, the applicant's mittel package, and all other conditions set forth herein. Two, any deviations from the project description, conditions, or exhibits shall be reviewed and approved by the city for conformity with this approval. Deviations may require approved changes to the permit, and the above described approval will constitute a violation of approval if not met. The applicant shall obtain a building permit from the Building Division prior to any construction pursuant to the approved project.
Thank you. Are there any questions from commissioners to staff?
Pierre, do the applicant give you any indication that they were not going to be here this evening?
They did not.
Thank you.
So I had a question. Do we know what the condition of the existing siding and windows are? Are they deteriorated, or what's sort of their current condition? And I'd ask that to the applicant if they were here, but since they're not.
I believe there is some damage on the siding. Flood damage, water damage from gutters that were backed up. That's all I know, unfortunately.
I know that structure fairly well, having dealt with previous owners who lived in that house in the past and dealing with them when the city rebuilt the Pleasant Street above. Anyways, I think they're just giving the building a refresh. So they're replacing, for the most part, T111 with T111. So it's going to approve, in fact, I think it's going to be Hardyboard, which is a very good fire-resistant material. And then they're replacing the single-pane aluminum windows with double-pane vinyl windows. So it's an improvement for energy efficiency. And that's basically about it. I think it's just to improve the quality of the building.
And the orange, I don't know the correct word for them. I apologize, squares around the windows, the encasements and whatnot?
Yeah, the window frame.
They'll remain? That wood? That goes around the outside?
I, I don't know.
Yes, I don't believe they're removing the trim.
Okay.
Are there any further questions for staff? Let the record reflect that the applicant is not in the audience, nor are any members of the public. So I will bring this back to the commission for discussion.
Well, I'm going to shoot out of the gate, and I want to register my dissatisfaction with the fact that the applicant's not here. And I'll go so far as to say that in the past, and I think to be consistent, we have required applicants to come back and be present for their projects. And so along with that, regardless of how my fellow commissioners vote, while I probably will not vote no, I will more than likely abstain. Because I just think it's inappropriate. They must not care that much about the process and what they need to do to not show up. Okay, so that's where I'm at. I don't personally care to even deliberate the merits of the project at this point.
There question, comments from other commissioners?
I take that point very seriously. I was wondering if you had any cases in mind where that actually happened? Because I...
We did that with the Shell Station at the corner, right by the fairgrounds. Remember, we did not approve their project. We made the applicant come back. And I believe we said at that time, we said, "Look, I thought we'd kind of adopted as a philosophy at this commission that we wanted the applicants to come." And that project we had questions on for sure. This project, maybe not so much. But to me, it's immaterial.
To me, it's very important that this exists in a historic district. And I think even more underscores your concern. I was just wondering if you had a case of a house in a historic district where this had come up before? had come up before.
Wasn't so much that. We have had a number, over the years, and we have had projects that have come before us, and there's no applicant, nobody to be able to answer our questions, and I just find that totally unsatisfactory, so that's, and I think it's important, though, that the public, the staff, my fellow commissioners, know why I would vote the way I would vote.
Chair Gotberg, just a couple of brief comments. Basically, there is no requirement that the applicant be present at the hearing. Doesn't prevent the commission from deliberating and making the decision on the project. The way I would look at it is, if the commission were inclined to make changes or looking towards denial of the application, then certainly you could vote and continue the item. But in something, I don't know if that's the case here, but let's just say it's benign, you're totally fine with what the applicant has applied for, and you're not making any change or anything like that, then you could feel comfortable moving forward.
You kind of took the words right out of my mouth. That's where I, I'm just imagining someone who has a night job and can't make it to a 6 o'clock meeting. I understand that that might not be the case here, but if it's not an expressed requirement for the approval, I'm kind of hesitant to penalize them, even though I agree with you, and we have had people go back, but I tend to agree with Pierre, and maybe that comes out in our discussion. If we reach a point where we really can't make a decision without the applicant's input, I'd be inclined to send it back, but I'm kind of disinclined to not even consider the application right now due to the lack of the applicant being here. That's my-
Thank you, and respectfully, I think that's a legitimate point to take. There is no financial or other penalty to postpone and request of the applicant return. And if they have a reason why they can't make the meeting, as I think you just said, because they have a night job or whatever, then that's fine, just simply provide that to staff. That was my question, did they give you any indication why they weren't going to be here? I know there's not a requirement, but I know if I had to pay the money to have an application heard, I don't know what's going to happen. They could deny it for something super crazy, I don't know. I would still want to be there. And so I just think that, you know, to be consistent, it doesn't hurt anybody, doesn't cost them any money. The worst that would happen is it might delay their work, right? So, anyway, that's kind of where I would be. I think I will still abstain, and again, just on the principle of consistency.
So I guess on this issue, I mean, I don't have a problem deliberating on an item without the applicant here, however, I did have several questions for the applicant, one of which I had asked staff earlier today related to the age of the aluminum windows, because to me, if those are older than 50 years old, they are a distinctive feature that you could consider to be historic, because the use of aluminum windows was commonly stopped around 1990, so it could predate or postdate that sort of 50-year mark on distinctive feature and historic or not. So I'd really like to talk to the applicant about that, sort of understand their reasoning for wanting to change the windows, are they poor-conditioned, is it just an aesthetics thing, how old are they, do they know? So I guess for me, one of the pieces of information I'd like to make to make my decision would be answers to those questions, and without the applicant here, I know staff doesn't have answers to them, so it's hard for me to kind of deliberate and make a decision. I think the other items in front of us, it's a like-for-like type of replacement, so I don't have the same sort of concerns of how old exactly is the existing siding.
Those are my questions, too, right in line with the windows, because obviously that has been a topic that we've had a lot of discussion and issues with. So in that case, I agree, if there is questions that you feel that the applicant would be sufficient, and we notify them for the postponement, that if they can let us know if they can be here in the two weeks or whatnot, whenever it comes up, and if not, why, or to let us know that we won't be able to address them, I'd be fine with that, in that reasoning, specifically.
I think this is a very good project and a terrific improvement to the condition of the existing structure. I think it's, I don't personally know the condition of these aluminum windows, but the staff report explains that this structure has been extensively changed since it was originally constructed, and I think that the change to a vinyl-sided window, one, as you go up and down the street, and I guess I should state for the record that I did visit that site as part of my research on this, I think the vast majority are trimmed in white. There are some dark-trimmed windows in the historic district, but this will change, this particular structure, these windows stick out for being a metal-clad look. They will help this building fit in with the surrounding buildings, most of which are trimmed in white, many of which have been changed over to, from wood to another product, probably vinyl. I didn't go up and look at them specifically, and I don't, you know, know all those projects, so there's a mix, but I would say the majority are trimmed in white. Of course, there's the energy savings of going from an aluminum to a vinyl clad, as I think Mr. Rivas mentioned. So for those reasons, I think it's a good change, not just for the structure, but to help it fit in with its surrounding, so I don't have any questions myself for the applicant. And as you stated, you know, changing over, it's a mix of two types of siding, but they're going with the same look with this new Hardyboard. That, I think, is a good change, also to, you know, just to improve the look of the small house. But I, you know, appreciate if you have questions for the applicant, then I can understand that we could postpone it. I think, as Commissioner Friend pointed out, it's just a matter of a couple of weeks, And I'd like to ask staff, if the applicant isn't able to be here, could we accept their statement addressing, perhaps we could just state for the record-
Yeah, questions.
-these questions, is that, would that be sufficient for them to respond in an email or a memo addressing the condition of the existing aluminum windows? Could we enter that into the record if we decide to postpone our decision for two weeks or whenever else this could, whenever this could next be put on the agenda? Or do we have to have them come up during public hearing and respond to the question?
I think the latter. We would want the applicant here. I can't think of a situation where staff goes back and forth with the applicant after a hearing to ascertain questions from. We would want them to attend the meeting.
In person, not just-
In person.
-answers to our questions in writing?
Right.
Okay.
So I'd be willing to change my position from abstention to a motion to postpone to the next available commission meeting, requesting the applicant be here to answer questions.
I'll second.
Yeah, I just want to make one more point really quickly before we move totally forward is around the windows, part of my reasoning is, having watched the city council meeting on the appeal on the last two windows and reviewing it again, they're really hesitant around us unilaterally, just approving vinyl, because the other ones are there, because basically people have done it wrong without getting permits, and so kind of making that the new trend, even though that's been our approval. They had a lot of discussion around that, and so I really want to kind of hone in on the type of windows and the detail around that, just to really tighten up our decision and have gone through the range of options with the vinyl versus the aluminum versus alike-with-like, was what the city council kept going back to in both their decisions on the appeal and their discussion. So I didn't know if the aluminum-to-vinyl is considered alike-with-like, because their sliding and just the really middle part is visible. Am I making sense about that?
Yeah, Chair Gotberg of staff can make a brief comment on how staff viewed and analyzed this application. First of all, it's a 1935 building, I think, if I'm correct, and my, what I remember, we researched, and it's in the staff report, when the building was first built, there are no historic architectural features left on the building. It's been, the entire exterior has been substantially changed from what it originally was, so I think the contemporary materials, the T-111 and aluminum windows, staff does not consider those historic, you know, notwithstanding maybe if the commission feels differently. We did not feel that it was, and so staff felt that the changes made would enhance and improve the building, and actually enhance and make it more, you know, from a visual perspective, you're driving by, I think an approved siding of Hardyboard and the approved vinyl windows, as you pointed out, Commissioner Lepper, with the yellow, I mean, I'm sorry, the white trim is going to be, is going to stand out much less as something than the current aluminum windows, which, to me, they stand out quite a bit. I think it's going to really enhance the building, but we did not, we did not apply Secretary of Interior standards, we did not consider any of these features historic, and so the level of review or the standard that we applied to this structure is very different than, say, the 1800, 1880-built houses that you looked at on Sacramento and then the one on Coleman. Those are very different. Those are old buildings where they were, and that's where the like-to-like comes from. We're not going to be using that term like-to-like anymore, because we're running into problems with that phrase in our, at the building permit stage, but basically, I think what the interior standards looks like, looks at, is a hierarchy where you're moving up a ladder of restoration, so is there anything to restore? Well, there's nothing historic to restore, they're just putting on new siding. The windows probably are not being restored, they're being just upgraded to double-pane vinyl. So in staff's opinion, it's not replacing something historic with something nonhistoric, it's going from contemporary to contemporary, and so the standards are much, much different. So that's how staff looked at it. So staff saw this whole thing as a vast improvement. Maybe the applicant felt that way, too. I don't know why they're not here, because they didn't talk to us about it, but again, if it's questions, it must be answered by the applicant. It's certainly within the purview of the commission to continue the item to the next meeting, but we can't guarantee that the applicant will show up at next meeting, or then encourage them to show up, because it's not required.
And that pretty much answers my question, yeah, so.
And I guess I would just say, on that, you know, I look at it a little bit differently in terms of, I look at a historic feature as a distinct feature, which clearly the aluminum windows stand out, so they're distinct, and then whether or not it's historic would be, is it greater than 50 years old? So I'm looking at it from a different perspective of not necessarily considering these contemporary if they were installed from 1958 to 1972. So that's sort of where I'm coming from.
Oh, Commissioner Gotberg, you and I are going to have so much fun when we start talking about the preservation of strip malls.
I know, it's a different view, and it's fine, but that's why I would like my questions answered, to make a decision, because if they can come in here and tell me their windows were installed after 1972, I have absolutely no problem approving this.
What if they told you they didn't know?
I think then it would be sort of these questions regarding the condition of the windows themselves, and are they deteriorating, et cetera?
Okay.
I think it's, you know, I feel like that's too strict of an application of the SOI standards, and, you know, I just, I read the introduction to those standards, and I see that even for historic buildings that are on a register, you sometimes reach a point where it's simply not economic and it's not reasonable to apply such a strict standard, and that's how I view our ordinance, is that each case that comes before us, we need to look at that in its own context, and we need to encourage homeowners to maintain their property, to improve their property, and I think that staff report in this case is accurate, is, and I'm in complete agreement, I think it's a great improvement to a small home. It's actually going to improve the aesthetics, particularly from the street, so, you know, what staff has reported tonight, I am in agreement with, and, but we, I understand your concern, and if the applicant comes and tells us that they were, these aluminum windows are, you know, more than 50 years old, that, I still see this as a contemporary feature as opposed to a historic feature that you see in the other houses in this district, and to, as far as an aesthetic and aesthetic and the condition of this building, I want the homeowner to improve it and make this, I think it can be a charming little house that is, you know, a bonus for that area as opposed to something that continues to deteriorate and then becomes some sort of a blight on the area and brings a whole district down. So that's my perspective, and, but I appreciate that you have some questions, so if we decide to postpone this decision, I think the applicant should try to address them to your satisfaction.
So we have a motion on the table with a first and a second to continue the item. If there's no further discussion, could I get a roll call vote?
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Gotberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Keeney?
No.
Commissioner Lepper?
No.
So the motion fails? So I guess it comes back to the commission?
Yeah, I'm having a hard time, when Pierre just answered my question that, around the vinyl and clarified all of that, I feel comfortable, I was happy with the application as well, and I thought it was sufficient. I don't want it to, I don't want it to not pass because of the lack of being able to ask questions, but I'm just feeling hesitant about kicking it down the road when I'm not sure how effective the applicant can be around it.
Well, just to the point that it's not being denied, it's simply being postponed, and the motion was very specific as to the next, the earliest possible date, so to minimize any sort of delay, but I think you've even heard that there is sufficient reason to raise questions to the applicant, that, and again, in a historic district, I think it would almost be inappropriate to not ask those questions. And Commissioner Keeney, I really support your comments, I'm in that camp. I'm also just really stubborn on this other, this other point, but I don't see it as really being much of a harm, and I think, I think the benefit, short-term and long-term, for this commission is important to me, so I don't see any harm in postponing it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm at the same point. I would be willing to approve everything except for the windows tonight. I don't really want to deny their entire application, because I have questions, but if we don't continue, it seems like that may be the position I'm in.
And that's what I don't want to happen. I guess I was just curious if you guys would be willing to discuss it more, but if you're steadfast on continuing it, could we continue to the next meeting?
I will be in abstention, if that helps my fellow commissioners.
Chair Gotberg, just two comments from staff. One, we were going to wait until later in the agenda, basically matters from staff. In the past, we have canceled the Planning Commission meeting when it followed directly after the Fourth of July, so we were going to ask the commission, purely up to the commission, I don't think there's any issue on staff, we'll be working, but if you wanted to cancel your July 5 staff meeting due to vacations or what have you, we've done in the past, so we were going to ask that question, but I guess I'll throw that out there now.
I have no problem with the meeting on the 5th.
Yes, unfortunately, I have no plans.
I don't have a problem being at the meeting on the 5th.
Great, then we can certainly have it on the 5th. The only other thing, too, is, and this is for your information, should the item die or action not be taken, typically then it would have been forwarded on to the city council for action, if it wasn't postponed, if it was just died with no action.
So, just so I'm clear, the previous motion failed, but if the remaining commissioners, and I only say that because I am going to abstain, if the three commissioners are not able to approve the project, then the project fails, it automatically goes to council.
Or deny the project.
Or deny the project.
You could deny it, and then-
And I don't, just for the record, I'd be absolutely clear, I do not want the project denied. That's not what I'm saying at all. I do have questions, and, but I just think the applicant should be here to represent their project, so hopefully that helps.
I agree with you that the applicant should be here, but we are in, yeah, a difficult spot in that, you know, it's incumbent on the city to move projects forward as expeditiously as possible, and I- expeditiously as possible. And I, I think staff has answered our questions as to the, the windows being a contemporary, contemporary exchange of one, one type for another. It's going to have the same look. It'll be a slider. And in fact, it will be an aesthetic improvement over, you know, despite the, the age of the aluminum windows are starting to, you know, show some degradation. They certainly aren't in brand-new condition. And I'm not sure that that's, you know, a suitable exchange to require them to go from an aluminum to another aluminum. I don't think that that aesthetically is pleasing from, you know, the pedestrian, the, the street view that is, you know, underscored in its importance in the, in the ordinance.
For me, an applicant not being present denies a commissioner the opportunity to ask questions. And, and that, at the end of the day, that, that's the real problem. Regardless of how small or large the project is, and this is a small project, but I, I don't like, sorry, I don't like being denied the opportunity to ask questions. And who knows, something else may come up in the deliberation, the discussions, like, oh, I have a question about that. I have no ability to ask any questions of the applicant. And that, to me, is a problem. And again, I'm going to go back to, I thought we had agreed that we were going to try to set a tone for all applicants, that, you know, you, you bring something to the commission, you should be here unless there's some extraordinary circumstances, which I don't think there are. And I think a two-week postponement is, is not a penalty. I really don't think it's that bad.
Well, I won't be able to be here on the, the 5th. But should we, we can reintroduce the same motion and take a second vote?
I'll reintroduce the motion to postpone this item until July 5.
I'll second again.
Can we make that to, you are insisting on the date certain?
Or the earliest possible, or the earliest possible, uh, meeting that it can be held.
You know, it's our convenience, too. Staff has mentioned that they, we tend to cancel that meeting after a Monday holiday. There's also the access to the public to comment on it. And also, you know, the applicant themselves may not be available on the 5th. Perhaps we could have it to, not a date certain, but to the next available spot on the agenda.
I would even go so far as to say the next available opportunity, including availability of the applicant. That would, that would then cover the applicant. They have a contingency or something. They can simply let staff know. I can't make it until this date, July 12 or whatever it happens to be, or it would be the 12, be the 19th. That way, that gives them the opportunity as well. So earliest possible opportunity, which is available to both staff and the applicant.
If staff could make a brief comment. It needs to be continued to a date certain, or then we would be required to notice the application, which is an extra expense on staff.
Of course. We've done it, I think we said it within, within 60 days. I think we've used that language, right?
It has to be a date certain.
Okay, it's fine. So it doesn't have to be an actual date, it has to be a timeframe certain.
Has to be a date certain. So either it's going to be date certain on July the 5th or date certain on July the 19th.
Okay.
If those are the two dates in July, you want to potentially hear it. You can't say within some period. We then would have to notice for that date for the general public.
I thought we'd done, the applicant would come back within 60 days. I could have swore we've done those types of motions, but.
Sure. But that's true. You can do that. But staff would still have to provide public notice in the newspaper.
And that's more, that's more work for staff.
It's more, it's work and expense. Yes.
If we choose a specific date, then staff doesn't have to do that.
Staff encourages you to continue this to a date certain.
Well, then, given the uncertainty of the July holiday, I would be happy to go to the 19th if folks don't feel that that's too far out. If they do, then I would say we'll do it July 5. So.
And if the applicant can't make it?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. So we're at discussion, right? So I think my motion was for the next available. We're going to change that, I think, to, we're going to pick a date, July 5 or July 19, right? I think those are the two. And then your question, Commissioner, is what if the applicant can't make it?
Yes.
And I think my previous motion said, and, unless the applicant provides a reason why they're unable to attend the meeting, right? So at least we, we know it's just because they just didn't care to show up.
And then at that point, we would discuss the merits of the project.
Then we would discuss the merit, merits of the project. Yeah. That would, that would be my motion. Commissioner Gotberg, are you comfortable?
I'm okay with changing the motion. So we're, what date are we picking?
Okay. So then that's, that's, that's the other, that's the first half.
Yeah.
Just, I'm happy to go with either the 5th or the 19th. If there's concern about the holiday and compromising the applicant, then I would say the 19th. Obviously, the disadvantage of that is, it's a one-month wait as opposed to a two-week wait. So, you know, I, I don't have a sense for either one of those. So to give the applicant the benefit of the doubt, I'd go the 19th. Again, I don't think a one month is still all that much of a wait on this. So.
I, I would be good with going to the 19th. It seems less likely that, and if they have other things, they may be able to reschedule them with a little bit more time.
And a question for staff, if we go to the 19th, but the applicant says, hey, I can be here on the 5th, could you adjournize it for the 5th or no?
No, we can't, we can't notice it for two different hearing dates. It's got to be date certain. Staff would just state that if, if the planning commission is, is not inclined to cancel your July 5 meeting, we will have a, a meeting on July 5. We have other items we'll bring for you.
Right. Thank you. I think the issue was going to Commissioner Keeney's point is, well, if there's, if that's a holiday weekend, maybe that would make it difficult for the applicant to make it. So I'm happy either way. Right now, we're, we're talking about the 19th. But if Commissioner Keeney and or Commissioner Lepper say, I can support it if it's the 5th, I'm happy to go with that. I think getting it postponed is the most important point. Okay. I'm going to choose the 19th then. Commissioner Gotberg, you're, you're good with it?
I'm good with the 19th as the date certain. So we're, the motion on the table is to continue the item, date certain to July 19th. And.
And request staff, including, and request staff to please contact the applicant, advise and, and encourage them in all strongest possible terms to attend. Please.
So we have a first and a second. Any further discussion at this point? All right. We are going to have another roll call vote.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Gotberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
No. Thank you.
The motion passes 3-1 with Commissioner Lepper voting no. So we are now moving on to, we have no continued items. We have no new business. So matters from commissioners and staff, item 13.1. Do staff have any reports for commissioners?
Staff does not. Nothing since our last meeting, two weeks ago. Staff would just again ask if there's any inclination of the commission's desire to cancel the July 5 meeting.
Pierre, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you said we were having a meeting.
Unless you cancel it. If you don't cancel that meeting, we will have other items on that meeting.
Oh, okay.
In case you were thinking that only this continued item was going to be the only item on July 5.
Okay.
We'll probably have, we may have as many as three or two items on, on your next meeting.
Does that require a motion for us to cancel it?
It does, yes. Yeah. We just throw that option out because we've canceled it in the past.
My, my position would be that we have a meeting if there's business to be conducted, going to Commissioner Keeney's point. You know, we're in the business of conducting the business and I think we should have a meeting. But that's just me. Now, although you said you cannot, you cannot make it, right? You, you won't be here on the 5th.
Yeah. But also, we have heard from the public about having our meetings around holidays. If people do make plans, they aren't able, and I, I don't know what's on our agenda or what projects we might be bringing forward to us. But, you know, my, my personal plans aside, we have heard from the public that it makes it a little difficult for them to appear and, you know, feel like their voices are heard.
Personally, I'll leave it to, I agree with staff's workload. If you guys have stuff that won't make us have a super intense meeting, the next one, and we need to have that meeting, I'm totally open to going. And if it's not, and it's an ease on the public and the applicants and such, I'm fine with canceling it as well. So whatever the, the workload of staff and what you think is best is what I'm inclined for.
Yeah. The two items that it looks like we may have would be the CCNRs, the covenants, conditions and restrictions for cottonwood requirement is that the draft come before the commission for review. And then the other item is a, and I wouldn't really call it a cell tower, but a, but a telecommunications facility to be located on the roof of where the Verizon is off Ray Lower Drive. Making some changes there. But none of those are urgent, that they couldn't be continued to the.
Did they do that one before?
It was previously approved last year, but there's been significant changes, so it came back.
Got you. Okay. Okay. So it'll be a redo.
So I, I would be happy then, given the nature of those items, and in deference, again, to Commissioner Keeney, to cancel the meeting. I could introduce a motion, but before I do, just hearing it, a little people think, I know around election night, yeah, I really, I really think we need to cancel meetings that fall on an election night. I, I really do think we need to do that. Now, Commissioner Keeney, you and I, I think you were opposed to doing that when that came up before, because we had, we had a meeting on, and I think you were in opposition to that.
And we heard from the public, didn't we?
And, and so I think that's even more important than, than around holidays, unless it would have fallen on a holiday. But I, I'm happy to make a motion. We'll see where it goes, to cancel the meeting on July 5.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. Any further discussion on this item? All right. We will have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Chair Gotberg?
Aye.
Commissioner Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye. Now I'll make plans. I'm just kidding.
Are there any further items from staff to the commission? No? All right. Any members, our planning commission members matters for staff?
I have an item, Madam Chair. Actually, it's for not only just staff, it's for my fellow commissioners. And something I've been contemplating for a while. But this last item really, to me, seems a nice segue for me to kind of share what's been on my mind. And that is, applications, projects, code revision, zoning ordinance, all matter of things come to this body for our deliberation, our analysis and deliberation. And we have to render a decision on, on what the, the item is, approval, denial, et cetera. There's never any expectation, there should never be any expectation, that we would have a unanimous vote on any item. Okay? But I think it's imperative for staff, for the public, for the applicant and for fellow commissioners, that a commissioner's vote should be understood. That's one of the reasons I made it clear that I was going to abstain. I don't think any commissioner, or staff member, or applicant, or the public should ever wonder why a commissioner voted the way they did following deliberation. If, if we're, if we're going to get dissent, then, then it should be explained. If you're going to approve or, or support, that should be explained. And I just think that's really important for us as we move forward with our deliberations on, on a variety of things. I think it's, it's disconcerting when we have, we have a surprise, but wow, that, I wasn't expecting that kind of thing. So that, those are my personal feelings. I hope my fellow commissioners and staff feel the same way. But I think it's an obligation for us.
I just wanted, thank you, Michael. I just wanted to make one note that I was really excited that Michael Saragosa brought up appropriating funds towards historic surveys and evaluations at the last city council meeting. I think it's, it's long due and I really, really support having clarity around this and cohesion across the board with moving forward with our historic districts. And I also had a random thought. Have we ever proposed signage at the entrance at the major streets, say, up here on 49, right? Like saying you are entering such and such historic district, Bedford Historic, whatever, Cedar Ravine, you know, just to like, trigger it to people that you're in a historic district since all the houses are kind of, can be a mishmash and whatnot. But also for buyers, right? Because a lot of the things we talk about is we don't know what's communicated. I agree, maybe some sort of flyer down the road would be nice for realtors to have, to explain to people easily and not burden themselves with explaining correctly. But I just wondered if a sign at the entrances or major streets of those had ever been considered.
Yeah, that's a very good question. In my 20-plus years association with the city of Placerville, I have never, I don't recall that there was ever a request or consideration or discussion about signage stating that you're entering such and such residential historic district or anything like that of that nature. But I have seen that in other communities. And not just regarding historic districts, but just districts in general. Like, not too long ago, I was down in downtown San Diego and they have signs that identify you're in a certain, you know, like in this, this Italian district or that kind of thing that identifies a particular area.
Street sign has a little flag on it or something. Yeah.
Exactly. Yeah. So, so I've seen that in other communities. But my recollection is it's never come up here, regarding, regarding the city's historic districts. That's a good comment.
Well, I'm throwing it out in the universe that I think that might be helpful and solve some of our catching people problems without putting any effort or repeat resources into it. Goes up, tells people you're in it?
Does that require, does that require a motion to request staff to bring this, the attention of the city manager? Or can you just do it?
We can, we can just do it.
Okay. I, I think it's a fantastic idea. I mean, that's like a, wow. That's awesome. Yeah. That's, that's a really awesome idea.
Right. Basically, I guess I could go a little further. Where, where would I see that kind of contemplated signage go? I'll bring it up with the city manager. Maybe it's something that the city manager would bring up with some of the council members, see where that goes. Could be a potential, probably something to be considered at, either mid-year or at budget adoption, when we consider adding projects. It would be a CIP, capital improvement project, to do the signage.
That's what I kind of wanted to throw it in, since they were talking historic districts in the budget discussion. I thought that, I don't know, just popped into my head. So thank you for entertaining it.
Sure.
And bringing it up. And if you need anything, let me know. That was all. Commissioner Keeney, do you have anything?
All right. It is 7:10 on Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. And I am adjourning the Placerville Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Good job, Madam Chair.
It's 7:07.